We call the United States of America and through their Republic, for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Barr?
Here.
Jovanini?
Here.
Echoff, Callas?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Hicks? Bradshaw? Myers? Gaber?
Here.
Willie?
Here.
Thank you. Two items on the consent agenda. As the Council's approval.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan, second by Mike. Roll call please.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Callas?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Moving on to the regular agenda. I see we have a presentation from the greater Livingston County Economic Development Council. Adam, you can replace him up.
Okay, thank you Mayor, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to provide a brief update this evening on a few topics. Number one, and I put a couple of handouts on the table before you. Liz and Mary and Bob and I worked to get the word out on a grant program that the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity had last fall, a back-to-business grant program. And you see there before you the eligibility requirements, that it was really targeted towards smaller businesses with under $20 million of revenue, and they had a year-over-year decline where their revenues would get dropped due to COVID from 2020 in relation to 2019. And they had to provide some supporting documentation. So we provided technical assistance to over forty area businesses. Those businesses ranged in size from Anthony Lift Gates to Old Lot Cabin, Pontiac Family Kitchen, Bernardi's Printing Craftsman, Donnell's are some examples of businesses here in Pontiac that took advantage of that, and we helped submit those applications. The state had hundreds of thousands of applications for this program, and to reduce fraudulent applications, they are reviewing them by hand, and the process is still underway in reviewing. Our knowledge, none have been distributed to Livingston County. We've made follow-up calls to all the businesses to check out the status. We've actually with them, some of them who've requested in touch with a DCEO contact, Austin Grammar. If they have specific questions about their file or their application, we found a contact at DCEO for them, and so that's going through the process. Also, the city of Pontiac recently submitted a grant request to DCEO for their street skate master plan and some work in stabilization of the rafting building. I provided a copy of the letter of support that the GLC EPC offered the city in that. And then to let you know about a couple of other grants that we've provided here recently in Pontiac. One, to the new PK Uncorked Building. That has really come a long way in a short time, and we've awarded, we haven't funded yet, but we've awarded the grant in the amount of $11,250 for that. And then in December, we awarded the Boys and Girls Club a grant. We have a grant program for not-for-profits that have an economic development aspect to it. Futures, for example, has been a recipient of a not-for-profit in Pontiac that has previously received that. Futures acquired a company called Seed Balls where their staff, you know, packs seeds and then sells them. In the case of the Boys and Girls Club for $2,500, they had indicated that during the pandemic, they never closed a day. And they were open, and it was a place for local students to go whose parents may have been first responders and didn't have the luxury of working from home. So whether that was firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, people with OSF, even glow, wherever it may be, Boys and Girls Club stayed open. And we wanted to reward that. The economic development component is they have a STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math lab, and they have formed a team, and they compete in Peoria, Bradley University, and Elsworth. So we awarded a $2,500 grant for their STEM programs there. So that is just a very brief update on some of the things that we've gone to here in Pontiac area. And I take any questions from anyone if they have any at the moment, or any time for that. Liz, you were certainly instrumental, helpful, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, when we were talking about the grant, we do know that there is a huge delay. We have talked to several businesses. It's kind of been in a holding pattern for at least the past month. So just in case anyone inquires, we're monitoring it on our end as best we can. Other than that, wait and see.
Thanks, Adam.
Appreciate it.
Yep. And look forward to seeing you tomorrow, okay? Moving along, sewer plant permanent. Jake, so they're anxiously awaiting.
So this, recently in December, we were issued our new MPDS permit for the wastewater treatment plant. And what the MPDS permit is, it's an acronym for National Pollutant Elimination Discharge System. And what it is, it's a permit that we have obtained from the Illinois EPA that allows us to operate the wastewater treatment facility. And in this permit, the EPA uses as guidelines on the quality of our treated water we are expected to meet. It's a five-year permit, and every five years we're reissued the permit, there are usually some minor to sometimes major changes in requirements in the permit. The last few years, most of the facilities in the state have been without a permit for multiple years. As the Illinois EPA, in conjunction with the US EPA, have been struggling to come up with phosphorus and nitrogen limits for major facilities like us. So those facilities, including us, have just been operating on a prior permit, and once a new one comes, then we enact those changes. What I'm trying to do tonight was just kind of give you a brief little summary on the changes of this permit that are moderate to substantially different from prior ones. Most of the permits in the last twenty-five years have been pretty similar. This one is probably the most different we've had, most because of the nutrient level. So going down the list of some of the changes that we saw in this new permit, on our F-ment, our chlorine residual requirement is lowered from a .05 milligram per liter to a .038. This is pretty easy to achieve with a new facility, and the lower chlorine limit is, wraps around what they're trying to do statewide and nationwide is to put entries less tentacles into the receiving stream. So this is an action from there, something that the new facility will have no problem with. They did give us a compliance date, June 2022. I spent the better part of a year conversing with the EPA going over this new permit, gave them a lot of input, they gave me feedback, and so many things we kind of wheeled and deal on, hey, we're building a facility, give us all this date so I can be sure that we're up and running enough to meet these numbers, and they're more than accommodating. So on the chlorine, they gave us to June. And the other big change we saw was nitrate nitrite, which is a form of nitrogen. For the first time ever, we have a limit of ten milligram per liter as a monthly average. And where this came from is Streeter's drinking water for Illinois American has been chronically high in nitrate nitrates. And the negative effect of high nitrates and nitrates tends to, it's not good for young children and babies. It deprives them of oxygen when they're early development, something that's always been on the radar and a concern for drinking water. Well, the problem is, is there's not enough dilution in the Vermillion River between us and Streeter. So the best, I guess the first step for the EPA to try to address that is to target us for a reduced nitrate nitrate level. Now, everybody knows that nitrogen is also coming from runoff from agricultural and a lot of outgoing sources. And I'm assuming if this doesn't help alleviate the issue, that'll come down the road. Again, since we are building a facility that is able to treat that, they gave us to December of 2023 to be compliant. By then, our new facility will be up and running, and it was designed to remove nitrate nitrate nitrates. This was a real wild card because we were talking about phosphorus for the last ten years. Didn't see nitrate or nitrogen coming down the road for a long time, however, we did design it knowing that eventually it probably would. And here we are having a nitrogen level before phosphorus level. We won't see a phosphorus limit until the next permit in 2027, maybe 2023, but here we have nitrogen, so it was just a real wild card. But nothing we won't be able to achieve because of the new facility. Part of that permit is a special condition nineteen. A CSO pollution prevention plan will need to be submitted to the agency within twelve months of the permit issuance. And with that, annual public informational meetings will be hosted just to update the public on an annual basis on our CSO pollution prevention plan. This stems just from the amount of CSO overflow bypasses we've had in the last, in the last permit cycle. We have no reason to reduce those as much as we wanted. So this is kind of something to do to try to look at reducing those. Also, a CSO operation and maintenance plan, which is a C-MOM, which is what we had in the last permit that we developed, will have to tweak that and reintroduce it to the public again in the public informational meeting. And then just submit to the agency that we did host the informational meeting. The other thing with, as far as CSO goes, is we have to be a little more aware on sampling when we're overflowing, when we're having a CSO event as a result of high flow from storms. We'll need to do a little more sampling of the product we're putting in the river, the streams, and sample the upstream and the downstream of that point so we can really get a picture of what we're putting into the stream and what we're bypassing. Is it detrimental, is it diluted enough to what's not harmful? That's more information that they want to see so that if our CSO levels don't come down the next permit, then we'll have to take action on the potential to reduce or eliminate, or reduce CSOs or take measures to try to keep cleaner water in there. Again, everything with the CSO requirements are all conjoined with storm sewer separation. As we perform storm sewer separation, we reduce that storm flow in the system, we reduce the amount of CSOs. And the long-term goal is to reduce those CSO events enough to where we're not posing a threat or a concern with the EPA on the amount of CSO bypasses that we have and the volume of water we're putting back into the stream. So all this is tied back together to what I've been up here talking about for the last five years of why we need to separate storm sewers, not just the treatment plan and the ability for it to treat nutrients, but also to reduce the amount of overflow we have. So all that is tied in together. Like I, and I was talking about phosphorus, in this permit, they gave us by 2030 to begin treating for phosphorus with a limit of 0.5. However, it's my belief that once our facility is up and running and we're treating phosphorus, then our new permit kicks in. After five years after this one, the facility goes, okay, you've been treating phosphorus, we're going to just limit it now since we're doing it. Again, something we anticipated, something that we should not have any problem with at all. And the last one is one that's kind of got a lot of facilities in the state scratching their head, is special condition twenty. The Vermillion River, they've identified it as a risk with nutrients, with, again, nitrate nitrite and phosphorus. So they require us to develop a NARP, which is an abbreviation for Nutrient Assessment Reduction Plan. And the main component of this NARP is to develop a watershed group with the stakeholders of the Vermillion River Watershed. And come up with ways to try to reduce nutrient levels in the river. Now, the only facilities that the EPA is targeting for nutrient level right now are major facilities, which they categorize, the new facility that treats over one million gallons of water a day. Now, the Vermillion River Watershed between the source and the Illinois, Pontiac and Streeter. So what they're requesting is that we team up with Streeter's facility and sit around the roundtable and figure out how we can lower nutrient levels in the river. When we're already voluntarily building a treatment plan to reuse those nutrients, we're kind of scratching our heads here that we're more or less doing our part. And the funny part about this permit is it really doesn't acknowledge the fact that we're building this facility because they won't acknowledge till it's up online and running. So a lot of aspects, they're still treating us like we're not building a nutrient-producing plant. So this is something that I'll work with the EPA as time goes through the permit, and in the meantime, we'll probably contact Streeter and see what their thoughts are and get this going. The other thing we can do is we can look at other watershed groups that are in our area and team up with them. And there are some environmental groups around here that do some work for the Vermillion River. So that'll be something coming down the pipeline to kind of work together on that. And none of this is a bad thing. Like what I started talking about years ago, the need to improve the plant, the nutrients, I talked about the Gulf of Mexico and the dead zone from the high nutrient levels stemming from all of these receiving waterways throughout the US. That has made its way up here, and these are the things that they're wanting us to look at and to address to help reduce that. So some of them might be slightly challenging, but they're all for the great good, in my opinion, of reducing the nutrients in our streams. So got a little bit of work to do with this, but everything is manageable and can definitely be done. And the EPA has been very, very accommodating with all the conversations with developing this permit. And I will give them that, one of the better governing bodies I've worked with because they're always readily available to discuss and hear our side and our concerns, and I do consider them. Those are the main changes of this permit, and if any issues or anything comes along, the next slide, you guys will be first to move.
When does the permit go into effect?
It went into effect December 17th. And it took me about a month around there.
Pardon me?
It took me the thought to wrap my head around it. Illinois is very, they were their permits and their requirements are very lengthy and very, at times confusing, if you're not really skilled in doing it like other states. Yeah, read between the lines and whatnot, so I wanted to make sure I got a good grant from this far, and present it to you guys.
So the nitrate issue, does that impact at all, we've already invested and you're ramping up for the new?
No, because this is actually, the plant was fully designed to remove it. So there's no reason that once the plant is substantially complete towards the end of the summer, early fall, that we should start seeing those nitrate nitrate levels just drop on our F-O and get to probably far below our required limits. I don't see that as an issue whatsoever since we're just designing it.
Kind of built into your?
Yeah, it's built in, it's a major component of the facility.
So, so Streeter being essentially a downstream from us?
Right.
They must have some EPA demands on there.
Yes, and their drinking water side, they have to treat for this nitrate nitrate and get the levels down as well. And a good example of how we deal with it is the quarry compounds out on Route 23 that Illinois American uses for water source for our drinking water. What they do is when the nitrate levels in the stream in Vermillion are very low, that's when they send the water out there to store. So then when we have a wet season here and they see those nitrate levels increase in the river, then they'll pull from there. And it's a great way to be able to keep the nitrate levels down to a safe level in our drinking water. A lot of facilities don't have that capability or that option to have that kind of reserve of storage and ability to do that. So that's where Illinois American does a really good job of managing that, and that's something that Streeter and a lot of other facilities that have this issue work out, start addressing is ways to keep that level down. And that's why they're looking at wastewater too, so if we can get the levels down to our end, it'll reduce it further in the stream, help us drain out of the water. Everything's all connected.
This is probably impossible for you to tell, but is there a percentage or how much of the issue is, are wastewater treatments free versus wastewater treatment versus far enough?
My answer is a speculative opinion.
Okay.
My speculative opinion is that we are a very small percentage of what's.
That's what I perceive to be. I'm not saying you shouldn't do what you need to do, but.
We brought our average flow down from fifteen years ago to around 3.5 million to now we're around two. And we need to get that little bit of water that comes out of our treatment fan into the river versus how much river water flows through our river and our town on a given day is a small percentage.
How's construction going?
Muddy, I need it to freeze again. It's going well, we started up the new erasure system, new blowers and regal clarifiers last week. It was a very fun, hectic week, but we got a lot of the bulk of the new system firing up and it's doing great. Finally seeing some light at the end of the tunnel after the last two years of changes.
Thanks Jake. As we all know, you're doing a great job, keep it up. Moving on, we have to talk about the grants. Jake, you ready?
I've come before our council tonight to seek permission to refurbish in-place meterman vehicle exhaust system. What the exhaust system is, if you haven't been to the firehouse, it's a system that is developed to actually take in the exhaust from all the apparatus that pull in and out of there. It was something that was very hit hard by OSHA as well as NFPA for firehouses because obviously we've been able to have resided in there three hundred and sixty-five days a year, 24/7. It was something that Chief McDougall was able to get through a grant back in 2004, through the AFG grant that we're very familiar with. It's come to the point where we've outgrown our system due to the number of apparatus that we've added to it, specifically the ambulances. Because we've had to replace and reorganize the apparatus as well as add to it, it's in need of adding additional exhaust system to the current system. I put out a publication in our paper for bids, and I did receive several interest. We did send out the specs, we only received one quote though. The quote we did receive is from the business that we've been dealing with since 2004, they're the ones that continue to maintenance our current system. They're a very familiar company. In fact, as far as the meterman system, this company, there's only three in Illinois that actually are specific to metermen. And the one that submitted the quote is the one that's for our region. They were the only ones that were actually able to apply for it out of the three other ones that were there. So what they did was to do five of our bays and modify them, which would meet our needs both present and in the near future, as we had that fourth ambulance. And the total cost was $39,985. Like I said, this is a safety issue, going through some compliance things recently, specifically with OSHA. This is something that they're very heavy on with the fire departments to ensure that these things are in place. I did do my due diligence to see if this was something that we could replace through the AFG grant. I always try to do things through grant processes, and unfortunately, because we do have the current system in place, it would not be eligible for an exhaust system, whether it's new or refurbished through the grant. So the most cause-effect thing would be to refurbish our current one. So like I said, we received one quote, it was $39,985, and hopefully it's an excellent commercial report with that.
Any questions for Jake? It sounds like we're in a what you've got to do, you've got to do kind of thing. No questions, can I have a motion? Motion by John, second by Jason. Roll call please.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Callas?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you Jake. Moving on, I would like to get the council's approval to reappoint Sherry Lambrecht to the Fire Pimping Board. Sherry's been on almost two years, and two years. And she replaced Mike quite capably too, by the way. She doesn't write a bike, but what the.
She got promoted.
Any.
I'll make that motion.
Very good for you. Motion by John, second by Mike Barr. Roll call please.
Callas?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we're going toward the third quarter.
If we could flip those two.
Can I come on this first?
If I could just start, you know, we started at Woolwood back in July. We really haven't had a whole lot of numbers, and we're starting to crystallize now. And so we wanted to provide a little update to you, the council, as we enter the budget season to see what the financial impacts are going to be. We're not, we're at a final destination, we're still in the process. So with that, let Chief start, and we'll talk about the grant plan.
Like Fox said, starting July 29th, the finite part of the world drastically changed. On July 29th, our department went through a very much a dramatic change in our organization and what we are expected to do for the community. After being in the room with Bob and Mayor and finding out that our local ambulance company was going to be closing in fifty-seven hours, I can tell you the walk from City Hall to the Public Safety Complex there is, in fact, you can have a million thoughts go through your head. But what was reassuring, and I haven't shared this with many people, but once I got through that first set of doors and looked into the main office area, the entire fire department staff at that time was sitting in that office. They had their notebooks ready, all sitting there being very quiet, and as soon as I opened the door, all conversations stopped, and they said, what do we need, Chief? And we sat down and we mapped out a plan. At that time, just a lot of people weren't aware, but we did not have any physical ambulances on our department. We did not have any ALS or paramedic equipment, and we only had one paramedic on the actual roster. So needless to say, this undertaking for the first fifty-seven hours to most people would have been catastrophic, but not for our organization. As I said, we set out and we set a goal, and our first goal was simple. Our goal was that at 12 o'clock on August 1st, there was going to be zero interruption in transport services for our community. We took our objectives, we divided it amongst our organization. We took our objectives, we divided it amongst our organization, and we divided it in conquer. And I can tell you within an hour, most of our needs were already taken care of. And I'll get into that in a little bit. At midnight on August first, one BLS ambulance in service, ambulance that we borrowed from Colom. We had Cellcast on board who came to our rescue to provide us with an ALS ambulance for two weeks. And we had OSF on board with an intercept, we were able to help with intercepting any vehicles, or intercepting any calls on the BLS ambulance that would require a paramedic. Once again, at that time, we only had one paramedic on staff. We took on a huge undertaking to recruit people at EMS level of paramedic to be able to provide this service. After we accomplished our first goal and we were able to sustain operations for that time period, we started our next goal. And our next goal was to become more self-sufficient, not relying on our mutual aid partners like Cellcast and OSF to carry the load for us for the primary and secondary calls. So we went through the process of hiring several part-time EMS personnel. We also acquired additional ambulances for Moreland Park, working with the state as well as OSF to get those things licensed. And because of that, we were able to phase out Cellcast and OSF the second week of August, on August sixteenth, where we became primary response to our community. After we were able to accomplish our second goal, we went on two-week operational plans as I discussed with council during that time period. We were doing two weeks at a time because obviously this was a huge undertaking. Our next goal was to be able to become more sustainable as far as our operational model for the long term. At administrative level, I began working with city council, Bob and Mayor, trying to adapt to adopting the city ordinance. We also started to work on developing pro forma a report to see what the actual operational costs were going to be, not only short term, but long term. We also had to begin conversations with the collective bargaining agreement to make sure that we were able to meet all of their needs as well as ours in some type of formal contract to ensure that both sides were meeting both sides' needs. We also had to establish a hiring process, not only for hiring firefighters, but also hiring full-time EMS personnel. We also began to look at purchasing additional ambulances and ALS equipment as well as hiring a billing company. From September to present, we were able to accomplish all of this task. We were able to create a city ordinance with billing rates. We were able to come to an agreement with a billing company. We were able to amend our collective bargaining agreement to include EMS personnel. We've more than doubled our department roster to fifty-one personnel today by hiring fifteen additional full-time employees as well as eight additional part-time employees. We were able to place two ALS ambulances and one BLS ambulance and one ALS intercept into our service and into our fleet. On a daily basis, we have staff to shift commander vehicle, engine company, and two ALS ambulances at all times to ensure that our community is covered properly. We also rely on a callback system to staff additional apparatus, including additional ambulances, to ensure that we're able to transport additional calls in our community as well as mutual aid. At the end of November, we were able to start doing transfers for the hospital, emergency as well as non-emergency transfers. And by the end of two thousand and twenty-one, we were in two thousand one hundred and sixty-six emergency incidents. That number does not include the transfers that we're able to do from November until now, or until the end of December. That was an increase of three hundred and sixty calls from two thousand and twenty. As I was given this task to give you this review, I'll be honest with you, this was the first time in five months that I actually had a chance to sit down and reflect on everything that we were able to accomplish. And I can tell you right now, just talking to several other organizations, this was not an easy task for any type of organization. And I cannot be proud of our personnel and how they came together to pull this off. But when I really look at the root cause of how we were able to pull it off and why we're successful, it really came down to how we were hired on August first. There were four things that our department had in about when I became chief in August of nineteen, that our command staff looked at and evaluated in the department and said, "These are the points of our emphasis to our department." And we were successful in this situation because of these four points. First and foremost, we emphasized having structure in our organization. We are structured in a manner to empower our personnel to do their jobs within the framework that our leadership provides them. We empower each individual on their task. When I walked across the street and I divided out a hundred tasks to accomplish in fifty-seven hours, it wasn't anything new to them. They knew that they had the authority to operate within the frameworks we gave them and were able to multitask within fifty-seven hours to ensure that we put ambulances in service. The next thing, which is one of the most important things, especially when you bring in new people to your organization, that's culture. If you don't have the right culture when you're introducing new people to your organization, there is a chance for not success. Our culture is simple. We're here to serve the public. That is our mission. And the people we brought in bought into that culture. So throughout the past five months, as we get to know new people, as we introduce them to our policies and procedures, we created buy-in with them. And that's why things have gone so smoothly over there. We have people from all different blocks of life that are working together right now. Fifty-one people to come together in that short a time is pretty miraculous. And that is the culture that we harness every day over there. The next thing is our strong leadership group. The formal and informal leaders of the department worked together during this time period. We played off of each other's strengths while putting our egos aside to lead our department. Sometimes that's very hard to do, especially in the fire service. We're a group of a bunch of alpha personalities, but we realized the importance of what our mission was. And like I said, all of our leadership came together and said, "What was best for the organization and more important, what was best for the citizens?" And we're able to play off of each other's strengths and ideas off of each other and make this happen. And then finally, and this was special too within this first fifty-seven hours, strong external relationships. Several people came to our aid during this time. Cellcast, Colom, several of our mutual aid departments were calling to ask us, "How can you help?" That's something that doesn't just happen overnight. That was decades of working from one side and then building their trust and building that credibility with them. And it paid off during one of our hours of need. And I'm very thankful for their support and all of their help. But it was because of those relationships we had built prior to that is the reason why we got so much help when we did it. And finally, just a short cap, I do want to thank multiple people, and I'm sure I've done this several times in the past five months. Like I said, it's kind of been a blink of the eye and wake up and it's five months later and there's been so many things happening. But I worked with some of the best people that have ever been on the Fire Department. They truly are selfless people that put the interests of the community ahead of themselves and I'm thankful for them. The city government, specifically Bob Carles and his leadership through this, if we had not have all of your support through this, this would have made this objective very hard to accomplish. Our mutual aid partners, as always, they're there and our lead as well as OSF and their help for trying to go through all the licensing process of this, as well as our citizens. We've gotten nothing but support from our citizens. It's nothing to go out in the community, living here, and somebody giving a thumbs up saying, "Hey Jake, well, your guys know and your girls know, you guys did a really good job." And that means a lot for a person that's grown up in this community. So thank you to everyone. I can't say it enough, I'll be saying it until the day I'm no longer here, but it truly was a team effort and definitely I think it was reflected in the public service we provided, so.
Thanks Jake.
Let's dig into the numbers. Set of charts were in your packets today. We got new numbers in for December. When we started this process, a billing company, our, the hospital, everybody said, "Don't expect any money for six months." And they were right. Not only have we gotten money, we haven't even really got bills up yet, a lot of the billing, that, all the certifications that are required for Medicare, Medicaid, for the insurance companies, they're working through those and I think getting very close to getting those off the door.
Bring Jake back up, he was presenting.
Did you?
You're impressed.
Well, we'll get to it, all right? The old story, you've got good news and bad news. And so, starting over with the bad news. I see Stephanie here tonight, and she's kind of been our point person on this whole billing thing. She's learned a lot and she probably is going to tell you she has a whole lot more to learn. But tracking the calls, tracking our data with what, what happens is we create a report, the report goes off to the billing company, then they generate a report as to the run for the type of insurance that the individual has. She's double-checked those and getting those things to jive through this five-month process has been a process. So here's our transports that we've done since the first of August. I'll tell you what, let's, let's back up. No, this is fine, this is fine. In August, we had a hundred and thirteen runs. And so as we, if you remember Jake's presentation, we didn't run a whole lot of runs that first two weeks. And so as we do our analysis moving forward, we've kind of just pushed August to the side. And in September, we had a hundred and forty-one runs, October a hundred and eighty-nine, November a hundred and fifty-three, and December's numbers, we just got in today, had a hundred and eighty-three. So if you see, if you look, you know, that October and December, we're just shy of two hundred, and that's really where we need to get to. That as we look at the runs, as we look at our cost side of things, for the most part, our costs are fixed. And so the growth is going to have to happen here. So that's kind of what we got. Next slide. So as we look at the type of payers, the type of payers is extremely significant because different payers pay different amounts. And so Medicare will see that we're averaging about sixty-two percent of our runs are Medicare. Medicaid is about twenty percent. Insurance, private insurance is twelve percent, and those that have no insurance, no Medicare and Medicaid is six percent. Chief talked about the performance we did back in August. And if you remember, we said that based upon our research, Medicare and Medicaid was going to be right at about seventy-five percent, those two combined. And you'll see we're even higher than that, eighty-two percent. Then we also said that the other twenty-five percent was going to be pretty evenly split between insurance and personal. And so, you know, insurance, private insurance are right on the nose, the personal insurance, there's more on the Medicare and Medicaid side, particularly Medicare. So that makes a two-fold. Next slide. So when we are able to build for August, September, December, this is the dollars that are going to be built. September totaling two hundred and eleven, October two eighty-seven, November two twenty-five, December two seventy-five. See again, October and December are our targets. But we're not going to get all that money yet. And so go to the next slide. This is a reflection of what we anticipate. The Medicare and Medicaid, let's just take December. Can you go back this line? You'll see that in December, Medicare, we built out a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Go back down. We're going to get about forty-seven thousand of that hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Medicare, based upon the information that was invited by our billing company, is running right at about twenty-eight percent of what was built. Medicaid is even worse, at about nineteen percent. And we don't have any information yet on both insurance, private insurance, and no insurance. And so we're still using their numbers. They indicated that insurance will get pretty close, personal is a while. So as we look at this revenue side now, you'll see we have a range of, again, beginning in August of eighty-three thousand in September, and in December, a hundred and eight, October a hundred and fourteen. So that's the revenue side. As we look at then January, February, March, the rest of the fiscal year, what we've done is we've taken the four months, September, October, November, December, and averaged those and said, "This is what we can expect to get in the last quarter." We're going to get more than that. You know, Steph ran the numbers today and through January seventeenth, for January, we were, we were at December, on December seventeenth. So again, focusing on the revenue side, this is where we're at, anticipating a base of around a hundred thousand. Knowing that that's going to grow as we take on more responsibilities. Let's go to the next slide, the expense side. You'll see in August, the top of this page, on the personnel side, we just paid part-time fee, just got as many as we could, worked with as much as we could. The untold story on this is there was a ton of fire department overtime that as we brought people on board, we were needing to supplement with a lot of overtime. And so that's reflected in the general funds overtime budget. Then we stepped that up, we got to thirty-eight thousand in September, thirty-five thousand in October, and then we had our first full-time hires in November. And you'll see our expenses jumped. And December is highlighted because that's the first full month that we operated with our full team. With all of our full-time firemen, all of our full-time EMT people, the overtime is pretty much what it is. We talked about before that we're working a forty, no, three twenty-four, twenty-four on, forty-eight off.
Forty dollars.
And so we're averaging about forty-eight hours a week. And so built in is a bunch of overtime on the EMS side. Firefighters, they have what's called a Kelly Days, which helps them, they can work more before we have to pay time and a half. But that pink column there, whatever that color is, is basically what we're going to look like moving forward. And that's at the level that, you know, the chief feels comfortable. Now that's not to say that in the use of resources, we're going to maybe be able to make some minor adjustments there. But that's basically what we're looking at for our personnel costs every month. The operations side in the middle of the column, up till December, those are actual numbers that we've incurred. Now, in the first few months, August and September, we used our capital improvement fund to ramp up our operation. And so looking at December is our first real operation expense. So notice a big bump in supply in December. Then the last... Then the last quarter of the fiscal year, we used the pro forma that we established, uh, back when we started the operation. These, these are going to be somewhat fluid, but for all practical purposes, we're right there at that $100,000 level, uh, for monthly expenses. The other thing, if you remember, we talked about was, and a big item on our plan, our pensions, that this is going to have a significant impact on the fire pension fund that already has a significant unfunded liability. And love to make some provisions for that, it's going to make it even worse. And so you'll see at the very bottom, we've got EMS overhead, which is basically charging off, uh, to the, um, EMT employees, their IRF, their FICA, as well as their, um, workman's comp. And so that's about 24% of their salary is accounted for in helping to offset that overhead. Fire overhead is the fire pension of 34% plus 10% of, uh, workman's comp. And so you'll see, we're going to be right at about $125,000 per month on the expense side. When we flip back, when you flip back, you'll see we're right at 100,000 on the revenue side. So there is that gap there. That is going to have to be made up on the revenue side. And the Chief alluded to, um, since November, uh, we started assisting with transfers. That's helped immensely. Um, and that's going to grow as, as we are able to solidify our operation. So this is going to close, but as we jump off and start working on next year's budget, we've got to keep this in the back of our mind, that, um, that we are going to attack the revenue side, but it's going to take time to ramp up. And we've got to figure out, uh, how we're going to close that gap. So with that, questions, comments?
So, there's, there's one thing, maybe where we really got to keep or something to focus on.
Right.
But then the billing is really what bothers me, Medicaid and Medicare.
Mm-hmm. We're not going to change it.
20%.
It's what, it's what it is.
We're, we're somewhere along the line. Is it not, or are we just going to expect that it's just going to constantly be that delay?
It's probably going to be, well, it's not so much the delay. So we're going to get caught up and we're going to find the windfall, get a windfall as these things happen. It's just a, uh, that's just a cash flow function right now. In terms of long-term, what we're going to receive, that's it. If it doesn't get worse.
So there's 70, 75% just flushed out to us.
They, uh, to, to accept Medicaid payments, we agree not to bill the customer, not to go after anything else. That's what we're going to get. That, that's part of the, the, um, whole crisis that, um, providers have. That, that's the level of support.
That's about 30% of the amount.
Uh, not, not quite that. Yeah. If you add the two combined, it's going to be 125. Um, the one thing that after we've been operating for a year, there is a annual supplemental appropriation given to ambulance, uh, operators to help in bridging that gap. And, uh, our billing company said based upon our value of runs, uh, that could be about 6,000 through 70,000 dollars every year. So, but you have to have the operation for a year. And so that'll be coming in 2023. I will say this, when I first looked at these numbers, um, I was very depressed. But when you break down and say, what's, what's the additional runs per day that we have to generate? It's really not that, that's a big deal. If we can get in the area of about 8.5 runs per day, based upon this payer mix, we're going to be okay. We're not there yet, but I think we will.
Transfers pay about the same percentage, Medicare, Medicaid.
It just depends who's paying the bill.
So how do you increase the runs? Should I make some more accidents?
Now that we have our.
I can hit another tier next time if you want.
Now that we have our feet on the ground, um, and we got a better operational plan of how we're going to generate resources. Uh, that's why I listed open the door and put us in the limitation for transfers. Partnering with the hospital. Partnering with the hospital. So that's where we're going to generate our, our call, a larger call line to be able to cover those costs.
And there is a chance down the road, um, neighboring districts. So, um, it's just going to take time, but, but we're going to be there. We're going to be there.
At one time, we talked about Duffy's was covered and three or four other communities.
Two more, two more districts.
Is that what you talked to the Duffy's?
Yeah, yeah, but, um, right now, we weren't ready. And so they have to go find other districts.
Is that supposed to just be talked about?
But I think that, uh, we are providing a prejudice, but, uh, we're providing a very high level of service.
A lot closer to it.
And, and so I think that, uh, we're going to be tracking. I will say this, the level of, uh, people we've brought on are very, is very high. Not only in, um, in their skill set, but they have just meshed and really created some ease of it. And that, well, that is the leadership that Chief has provided. So, so we are in a good place now as a springboard to really being able to expand the service. So, the numbers look bleak, but they're, they're not that bad. They're not that bad. The other thing, our timing could not have been more opportunistic that with our ARPA funds, uh, which is the federal COVID money, all of our capital costs have been covered with those. We have another 750,000 coming in next year. So as that other ambulance hits, uh, we'll be having that paid for. So, um, that was very, very unfortunate. Again, just one more time, Steph has been working this end as well as sort of those. Uh, so we, we got to get her released from that as well. But, um, it's really taken on and run with the whole billing. That it's not just all done to the billing company, the checks, balances, and making sure reports are accurate and complete.
Thanks, Bob. The entire community is behind the ambulance service and the part of it. I don't think you'll find one person, if you walk down the street, go to a public shelter, they'll have a derogatory document. Uh, they've seen what's happened, they knew there was a emergency situation. And our emergency team came together. Uh, Jake did a fabulous job. But the whole team worked tirelessly to bring this together. And we adopted a great confidence, you know, even from people that at one time were involved with ambulances. Thank you, I'm patient. As Bob says, it's, some of the numbers may make us want to get under the table, but we kept up, we did it, and we will come on about eventually.
Yeah. Um, so with that, uh, we're going to move to our, as again, jumping off point to start talking about next year's budget by looking at general funds, um, third quarter numbers. And right, this part of my presentation is a whole lot better than this. So, um, with that, let's look at the revenues. Which by the way, David?
Yes, sir.
You did an excellent job of cleaning it up by, uh, charts and making them legible and, uh, pretty, so thank you for that. Okay, uh, revenues. The yellow column is where what we've actually received to date. Uh, the blue column, second column, is what we budgeted to be at, uh, at the end of the third quarter. The third column is, uh, what we had taken at this point last year. Fourth column is what, uh, we budgeted for the full fiscal year. And based upon our third quarter numbers, uh, the last column is making an adjustment to the, um, for the fiscal year. Just highlighting a few things. Number one is, uh, at the very top, sales tax. You know, we expect it to be at, uh, 2,055,000, uh, or 2.5, uh, million. That, uh, that is significant. Um, if you remember, as we've been look, tracking this during the, um, course of the year, a couple of things stood out. And we'll dig into this more as we start working on next year's budget. But titled vehicle sales just went through the roof, uh, in the second, third quarter of this year. That being automobiles and RVs. As well as the non-titled vehicles, uh, section for the, um, basically fuel sales with Waltons coming in. Um, the next one is the state income tax. Uh, you'll see that we expect it to be at 991,000, uh, 1.2 million. The, about this time of year, uh, the municipal league works with the Department of Revenue to make projections, uh, on various, uh, state revenues. And income tax is one of them. And my projections were based off their, uh, projections with a little punchback group, because they have a tendency to be pretty conservative. But this thing is off the chart. You'll know that we, uh, these are distributed income taxes, so the others are distributed on a per capita basis. December was our first distribution that, um, was based upon our new population, that, uh, our population had a 7% dip. And the state's population stayed the same. And so our share of the income tax, uh, moving forward now is going to be, um, 7% less. But as we said, that December's, um, after the 7% decline, we had an 18% increase. And so, uh, I'm really anxious to see, uh, coming out here in the next few weeks, the new projections moving forward for, uh, the per capita revenues. Uh, the next one, replacement tax is the same thing. Uh, we're up over 130,000 over what we anticipated we'd be at. Moving down to the middle, Illinois gaming, uh, that's based upon, um, our share of the, uh, gaming receipts. Uh, we're up 200, we're at 244,000, expected to be at, uh, intermedia. And then the one is, is the Illinois use tax. You see, we expect it to be at 405,000, we're actually 321. That's a function of the, um, sales tax and also the replacement tax. That there's a new formula for how, uh, Illinois use tax is, um, calculated. It went down, but the others went up. And so part of the increase in sales tax is a reflection of, uh, that flipping. So as we go down to the bottom, you'll see that we, um, expect it to be at, uh, 4.4 million and we're 5.2 million. And for the fiscal year, uh, we expect it to be at 76.5 in the, in the general fund, and we're going to be at about 7.3 million dollars. So, so that's good news. That, that's very good news. When we move to the, uh, expense side, for the most part, um, we're right where we expected to be. So the next, well, but any questions on revenues? Again, this is just a flyover. We're going to have plenty of opportunity in the next few weeks to dig deep and see what the indications are moving forward. So administration on the expense side, you'll see we expect it to be at 547 or 523. There's one line item there that's kind of out of whack, and that's legal fees. That was legal fees incurred, uh, for the ramp up of the ambulance service. Working on the agreement, uh, with our filings with the Labor Relations Board. And so, um, otherwise, for the most part, right where we need to be. Next department is the cemetery department, same situation. Uh, expected to be at 143, we're at 120. Uh, we expect to end up at 178, which is about 5,000 in your way to do that budget. Next department, uh, building sidewalk maintenance department. Uh, we expect it to be at 145. That second column, we're actually 134. And we expect to end up at about 8,000 to be good for, uh, for the department. Next one. Now we start to get into some of the bigger departments. The street department, we expect it to be at 883. Uh, we're at 840, uh, so that's good. And we expect it to end up real close to what our original budget. So, questions, comments on that? Next one, fire department. This is the one that really, uh, you see that we expect it to be at 100, 1,67,000 or 1,65,000. Overtime was the biggest culprit there. Uh, otherwise, uh, things are too far out of whack. And so you're going to end up at about 1.5 million, uh, which is 20,000 of what we expected to be. But that all wrecked it at the start of the year. Okay? Police department, um, you'll see there 40,000 where we expect it to be. Um, going to end up real close to, uh, where we felt we should be. And lastly, uh, street lighting, uh, we're, uh, we're under, part of that is, uh, with slowly getting us a couple of bills. We're getting up right where we expected to be. Um, the SBA budget is very, very small. It's mainly the maintenance side of the sirens. But that's, uh, going to be right at 5,000. And then the last one is the police and fire division, which is all of our testing. Um, that should be 12,000 on the comments on place on the budget line. I don't care. We're going to be pretty close. We have a new police list that's going to have to develop pretty soon. We're in the process of creating a new, uh, fire list. And so, uh, those expenses will be generated. We also have, uh, provide subsidies to the park fund. So we totally want to look at, um, the youth center. On the revenue side, we expect it to be at 107,000. Uh, revenues in that blue column, we're at 125,000. And we expect to be, uh, that's another revenues. Total revenues were 12,000. Total revenues were $12,000, and we're going to be about $17,000 to be good on the revenue side. One, to drill down and look at programming, we expect it to be at $38,000, or $63,000. Tumbling gymnastics is just going crazy. That's exploded. And last week, Taylor talked about what happened.
We had our first weekend our new facility, so if you guys remember, I think we talked about it a little bit before, but the dumb bike, international art, airbrush, whatever art studio, whatever we called it before, just sitting vacant, where there was a whole lot of law on there. So I brought about the idea of moving our gymnastics program over there just because it has been so successful. And that would be to open up our classrooms back for rentals. We had our first whole week over there, nothing came back from parents. And so it's gone really, really well, so we're excited for it.
They're still taking registered staff, right?
Oh, yeah, yep. Yep.
So that's been a huge, huge success. Moving down to the expense side, we expect it to be at a deficit of $73,000, we're at a deficit of about $99,000. A big chunk of that is the part-time expenses. There's a function between part-time parks, part-time rec center, that there's a lot of overlap in what they do and who does what. And so as we get to the park side, you'll see that that's way down, and it evens that out significantly. But with that, you know, we're going to be, with a loss of about $148,000. We thought it was going to be $191,000, but a good chunk of that is paid up on the park side. Let's go to the park. You'll see that in terms of, we expect it to be at expenses of $333,000, we're at $310,000, and we expect to be right there on the expense side for 26. And you'll notice that carrying forward, the line item, community center, that's the losses that was on that side of things. And so that's accounted for. You'll see that the part-time, we thought we'd be about $72,000 or $23,000, and so that is kind of offset a chunk. So as we looked at the totals, the general fund subsidy was going to be $246,000. We expect moving forward to be right at $241,000, right from the start. So as we put this whole thing together, all of the revenues, 4.4 is where we're going to be, we're at 4.89 expenses, saw a gap of about $403,000. Actually, we have surplus of $496,000. So you add those together, we're right pushing $900,000 to the good. As we move to the, what we expect to be at the end of the fiscal year, we're expecting surplus of about $674,000, $675,000. That's very conservative, I think will be probably the $700,000 range. So again, we're in a very solid position here as we look forward to moving ahead. So we look at that, we look at the short term on the ambulance side, and as we look at our basic operations, this has been excellent.
It's been a real interesting year.
Better.
We've had a lot of ups and downs, and the projection looks good for coming here. Again, it's worth it, all of the markets that have worked very, very well. I'm a barter for a career.
I don't know, if any city bought a golf course and then had a rec center, I would call it a city.
We still have $650,000 extra that we didn't anticipate. Yeah. Can't wait to see what this year.
All right, moving on. Great chat, Bob. Mayor's comments, I've got a few positive comments. The ice cream's open. Taylor, how are things going?
Really good. You know, during our popular times, we take those reservations still. Again, we're averaging 30 to 40, you know, during those really, really popular times, you know, weekends and a little bit more denied time, it's, you know, the ice is going to open up well now that we've been able to open it up. I'm not having that heat really anymore. So it's gone pretty well, didn't really complain too much. Got a lot of good feedback, people coming. You know, it's funny, I go on Facebook, I just see so many pictures of families and stuff over there. It's just a good time, so very enjoying it.
I did get a call yesterday from somebody that we deal with that lives in Lubbock. They said that we got our reservations, and I just want to make sure, are you guys open today on the holiday? I said, yeah. He says, well, because we've got 20 people coming, and we want to make sure that we're not making a trip to Vegas, so.
Yeah, schools have been contacting me, Prairie Central is going to come over. They want to spend some time with their students and teachers at Van Grace Christian School. They're going to come over every Friday before we open up. So the high school is going to do their, some sort of dance outside. Wow, it's so crazy.
Well, as we could have some ambulance revenue coming in.
So it's all or nothing, we're very pleased, now we got it open.
And let's talk about February 15.
Yes, we have, we're very honored to be chosen to be the first community for our Main Street meetup. It's going to be a quarterly event that Illinois Main Street is going to be doing. They are having our community development team give a presentation. So they'll be inviting Main Street directors and Main Street partners from throughout the whole entire state here. We're hoping to have about 30-plus come and attend. And we get to give a presentation, and then at the end of the day, we're going ice skating.
Fun too, yeah. The only other thing, well, a couple of things. I think we all know that Jim Melvin is recuperating, but I've called him a few times. But it'd be nice if we could all take a moment and give a call, just to aggravate you at something else.
He saw him that, right?
Yes, he saw him, yeah. Doing well, looks like. We do have need for Canadian Hole.
Yeah, it is scheduled for next Monday at 6:00. And again, we're going to be digging some of these numbers and looking forward and addressing some of the issues that we have coming up and-
City Hall is both here.
It's going to be in City Hall, Council of Changers, yes.
6:00.
6:00.
And other than that, I think Bob probably has, please, one more comment tonight.
No, I'm done.
You're done, okay. City Council comments?
If we work on the, this budget for the next week, next month, this budget.
We're just forward to releasing a bit.
It'll go when everything else is going to make a shot. Plus, your game will come back. Yeah, we'll hit all 210 yards again. Anything else? Public comments? No public comments? Then I think we have a key motion to adjourn. Don't move by Ryan, sit by John Rose. Here we are. Adjourn.